I'd like to do our invocation for us this afternoon, please.
Sure.
Deanna Shaw from Chatsworth Community Public Church, Bible Church.
Thanks. Okay, let's bow our heads. Father, we thank you for this day, and we thank you especially for the rain that we needed so bad for the farmers and for our flowers and vegetables and gardens, Father. But I want to thank you that everybody here tonight is so concerned about the welfare of Perry. And I really bless them, God. Bless them for everything they do, all the hours and time they spend. And they sure really don't get paid for what they do, Father. Each and everyone brings something to the table, different way, different method, Father. We all work together for the good of the community. God bless them. And also for the girls upstairs. Bless them. The Department of Public Works, man, the police officers that protect us, Father. And we just thank you for everything flowing so well in this community. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Yes.
I've got seven o'clock, so I call a meeting to order. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yeah.
My pledge of allegiance...
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Shirley, would you call the roll, please?
Mike Connell.
Chad Fuller.
Here.
Mindy Gobbi.
Here.
Larry Lambert.
Here.
Bob Porter.
Steve Wallace.
Here.
Sue Hahn.
Okay, I think Bob just pulled in.
Oh, Bob's pulled in?
Yep.
He will be here momentarily. In the meantime, I'm looking for approval of tonight's agenda.
I move that the agenda be adopted as printed.
Okay. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or nay. All opposed? Motion passes. That was Chad and Steve. Looking for reading and approval of the minutes of our last meeting.
I move that we suspend the rules, waive the reading, and approve the minutes from the July 6th, 2023 council meeting.
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And we are now ready as soon as Bob gets sorry to place...
My glass was three minutes slow. It's like, oh, yeah, okay, go.
For pre-approved reports and presentations. Okay. Bob Porter will be awarding our Best Face Forward as well as the Perry Pride Award for this month.
Is there someone here from the VFW? There we go. So, come on up, guys. We're gonna want to take a picture, or we...
Yes, my guy.
You got it? Sorry, I didn't see you there, Meg. So, this is for the recognized businesses in the city every once a month, and I went by, and it's hard to pick people, but I figured you guys are deserving of it this month.
Well, thank you.
So, who wants it?
We appreciate it. On behalf of Perry VFW, Amets, Women's Auxiliary, Sons of Amets, put a lot of effort into our work, and we appreciate the recognition.
You're welcome.
We do ask to be excused at this time, though, because we had a meeting started at seven o'clock.
She just wants to get a real quick penitential book, so... Hold it. There you go.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Appreciate it, guys. Appreciate it.
Don't forget your vegetables.
Sorry, we have to leave so early. We've got a meeting due. Thank you.
You're good. Thank you. All right, so the Perry Pride Award goes to Tina Johnston at 408 Lamb Street.
Couldn't count that.
She couldn't count. So, we will get her all her stuff to her. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
You're welcome.
This is written here this evening for public comment.
Yeah. It's not until later. Never were discussing the pet organs since you're putting it.
Okay. Having here no public comment, we'll move on to communications tonight. Do you have anything we got, Shirley?
All right, so I just wanted to let you guys know that I received an email. Megan has printed this. The Saginaw-Shaiwasi County Habitat for Humanity is going to be painting Peg Lee into this house on July 22nd and July 29th. Those are both Saturdays. Peg lives on Willow Street, and they are apparently helping her out with some home renovations, I guess. And so, that's kind of cool. So, if they're looking for volunteers, they have two shifts. So, if anyone's interested, we have the information on the front counter. And also, the National Night Out, the Police Department's hosting that on August 1st from 5:00 to 8:00 o'clock here at the Veterans Memorial Park. And we'll just do all their activities. They should do probably hot dogs and all kinds of stuff like that, so...
That's amazing.
Yeah.
Now, in the Habitat activity, is there any ways you could get in contact with, or is it on that flyer?
There's a phone number on here.
Okay.
And an email.
So, if anybody's interested, please follow up in Habitat and our resident, our city, please. Okay, on behalf of Sue, there's just a couple of mayor report items that we'd like to cover. First off, just a reminder, I think she covered this last time, we do have an open position on the SADA Transportation Committee that Sue was looking to appoint someone to fill that. So, if there's any interest, please contact Sue when she gets back to being healthy, or you can also check our website at perry.mi.us. And it's posted on there, and you can read about it. It basically is our, not quite free, but very economical transportation that we participate with other Shaiwasi communities and taking advantage of our residents. So, if there's any interest there, please explore it. The other thing that she asked to say, Megan, I may ask for some assistance on this, is the ongoing status of our grant application that we've got in process for security and technical activity that I think has been going on for some number of months, trying to land it. Right now, it looks like Megan had reported back to Sue and to me this morning that we're looking at late summer before we have any, the next term, we will know any more about that.
Yep. There was a demand through us through the federal grant program, I think, last fall. Then we had to fill out a formal application that we do in May. And I just got the last status update. Is they're looking to send award packages late summer. So, whatever our definition of that is, we don't know yet.
Hopefully, it doesn't get into late fall or early winter, but we'll stay tuned. I think those were the only notes that Sue provided me. But let's move on to committee reports. And I know this is really a committee report, but Kevin asked for a couple of minutes to do a department update for us, so I thought it'd be a good spot to do it on the agenda.
I know some of you are aware that we had a little bit of a water issue last Friday. Started at 2:00 in the morning. I got called in by the automated system that there was issues with the treatment plant. Upon my arrival, it became evident that something broke within the treatment plant. There was water coming from the building. And upon further assessment, I opened the building, and there was water about three foot deep in there. Everything was still trying to function. We were able to get in there, drain the building, turn the proper valves off to secure the pipe that was broken, and do a repair. It was an unforeseen event. It was unpreventable. There was a pipe at a flange that gave way. I don't know if the pipe is reaching the end of its lifespan, or if it was just an anomaly. I know I talked to some of you, and I didn't want you all to be guessing about what the situation was or what happened. We weren't able to keep system-wide pressure, which didn't require boiled water. We did some temporary repairs within the building to turn the pumps back on and start filling the tower again until we could secure plans that illustrated a bypass, and we were able to bypass the water treatment plant. And we did a remote chlorine application within one of the wellhouses to keep chlorinated water flowing to the distribution system. The only thing that was essentially bypassed was the iron removal, which is for aesthetics. There's no, we don't remove the iron for arsenic. There was no violation or contaminated water of any sort that made it into the system. And we have been taking steps to make it easier to secure the building in such an event again. We did lose some electrical equipment within the building, which we were able to run the system without. We have to get prices and start getting that stuff switched out and get it maintained. But, so there'll be probably some purchases coming to that regard. In my experience, it's very unusual for something like this to happen. I've never seen it in my 21 years of experience. And my crew stepped up and did whatever it took to make sure that people had good quality drinking water throughout the event and get the repair done and get us back online. And I just feel like everyone should know and understand the dedication these men have. So, I thank them for their dedication and their hard work. And if any of you have any questions regarding this, feel free to contact me at any time.
I'll tell you, while how quickly there was a notice out on Facebook as to what was going on, so that people happened to see our, now check Facebook, they knew right off what, not that detailed to provide it, but at least that there was a water main issue.
We didn't have any water quality issues or complaints. We tested chlorine residuals throughout the event to make sure that there was substantial chlorine in the system and that the water was drinkable and safe for everybody. So, we worked really hard to ensure that, which is why we're here, for our job. And I feel like we did everything we could to make that happen, so.
Yeah, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Other committee reports.
I have one. We had the Family Fun Night yes, or last night from 6:00 to 8:00. It was a really, really great turnout between the vendors and the public. I probably would guess maybe 200 to 300 people were here. Everything went off really well, and I've had a lot of private messages sent to me to see if we're gonna do it again next year, because there were some people that couldn't make it. So, the Family Fun Night last night was a really big hit. And I thank Megan a lot for doing a lot of the stuff to get this up and going. So, Megan did a great job.
Thank you. Anything else from the Parks Committee right now?
As of right now, I have nothing else besides that.
Okay. I'll just report that the Ordinance Committee is going to be meeting next Thursday, the 27th, at 10:00 a.m. here in Council Chambers to continue our activity and discussions on all our ordinances that we're continuing to address. We'll be talking about a couple of those on the agenda here later this evening. Any other committee reports? Okay, let's move on to approval of the bills we could then, please.
I move that we approve the bills as presented and payment be authorized.
Second.
We have motion by Bob, seconded by Chad. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Just a note here on our old business, we get discussion of emergency services. Kyle is not here tonight, but he did provide to Sue an update that he will update the council on our meeting on September 7th, when he has information on the County Everbridge Program and an update on the CIREN status as well. So, we will table that for this evening and just have that as an agenda item at our September 7th meeting for an update from Kyle. Any comments or questions on that? Okay, moving on to new business. We've got a couple of mayoral appointments that we're looking for our council approval on. The mayor reappointed Bob Porter to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a three-year term expiring July 2022, six, excuse me, 2026. Looking for a motion?
I move that we approve the mayor's reappointment of Bob Porter to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a three-year term expiring July 2026.
Second.
We have motion by Steve, seconded by Chad. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion passes. The mayor also reappointed Greg Weckworth to the CISA Board as an alternate for a four-year term expiring July of 2027. Looking for a motion for approval of that.
I move that we approve, nope, I lost it. Sorry. We approve the mayor's reappointment of Greg Weckworth. Sorry, I probably ordered his name. To CISA alternative for a four-year term expiring July 2027.
Second.
We have motion by Bob, seconded by Steve. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, that motion also passes. Okay. Let's move on. The next item that we have on the agenda is discussion to potentially approve a noise ordinance variance for Cafe Sports. And I understand we have Aaron Weaver here to make some comments with regard to why the request for that variance.
Look, we have had several customers ask if we would do some type of entertainment out on our patio. So, we researched bands that are local and that live within the community, and we did find several. So, we have, which I believe you have a list of what nights we have. So, this Saturday, we have just a solo guy named Bill Maria. He plays country music, a little bit of classic rock. And we have him scheduled from 8:00 to 11:00. And then Friday, July 28th, we have, they're called Rusty Snail. It's a duo, and they play the same type of music. Friday, July 28th, 8:00 to 11:00. And then Saturday, August 12th, we have Velocity Shift, and they are a four-person band, and they're playing from 8:00 to 11:00 as well. And then Off the Ledge is gonna be Saturday, August 19th, which is another four-person band. They're 8:00 to 11:00. But then on August 5th, Ragus Hill on the 4th, we have Pots World Band, which they're also a local band, and they wanted to play 8:00 to midnight. So, we were just wondering if there's any way the noise ordinance could be lifted or moved higher from that.
Or add an exception for Cafe Sports. On our noise ordinance currently for the rest of the council, we have two sections that apply relative to timing currently, and one is, I'll read both of them, just so everybody's up to speed in what the request really entails. This section prohibits excessive noise that interrupts your neighbor's peace and quiet between the hours of 10:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m. So, basically, that one will require quiet after 10:00 p.m. Construction noise, noises due to erection, demolition, alteration, repair, et cetera, that one says you have to be noise-free after 8:00 p.m. So, basically, the one that I think would most apply here, they're asking for in reality, I believe, like a one-hour variance and two hours on the one particular Friday evening.
Correct.
Comments, questions, discussion?
Are there plans to mitigate some of the sound, like maybe placing the speakers so that they point toward the highway versus...
Yeah, so right now, like tonight and last Thursday, we have a gentleman playing. He's a one-man band, and his speakers are, he's on the patio, and there's a roof. And then, yes, his speakers actually point towards our coolers and at the highway. Yes. So, that's our intention, not having them like blaring towards the apartments or anything like that. Yes.
Any other questions or discussion?
Is there any particular reason they wanted to play till midnight instead of the 11:00?
I guess the same question, and they just said they typically play for four hours. So, I said, okay, I will look into it, and, you know, and if we can't, then they're done at 11:00. So, they just, I guess, typically always play till midnight, so.
That's my point. What Steve asked of that is my only concerns.
Any other discussion questions before we entertain a motion?
I move, I'm sorry, I move that we approve the suspension of the noise ordinance 670.303. I'm sorry, 670.03 for Cafe Sports for the following dates and times. Saturday, July 22nd, 2023, from 8:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. Friday, July 28th, 2023, from 8:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. Friday, August 4th, 2023, from 8:00 p.m. to midnight. And Saturday, August 12th, 2023, from 8:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. And Saturday, August 19th, 2023, from 8:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m.
Sorry.
We have motion by Chad, seconded by Steve. All in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Do I have to have paper or, you know, anything like that, something that burns down our doors and...
I think that we need to let the chief know.
Okay.
Just so they know, but I don't. So, can we do that?
Good suggestion.
Yep, awesome.
You make that happen, Charlie?
And we, my knees, yes. I appreciate it.
You have to have Korean folk sliders on special, little guy.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is the discussion around possible approval of a DPW back truck. Kevin?
It became evident shortly after I started working here that the current back truck, sewer jetter combination truck that we have, it's got some years on it. It was produced in 2002, 2003, somewhere in there. The back truck is a key piece of equipment that's utilized for multiple departments such as sewer, water, parks, streets, and I'm sure there's something I'm forgetting. And we use it for everything all the time. It's built into our emergency response plan, and since I started here, we've been investigating different types of trucks and equipment that are out there. We've done four demonstrations from four different companies that provide these types of machinery. And they presented four options from three companies for us to consider to replace their existing back truck. Megan and I have been working hard to figure out a plan to fund the replacement of not just this piece of equipment, but other aging pieces of equipment as well. There's, like I said, four quotes. Two from one company, one is for a demo unit from M-Tech, and one is for a stock unit from M-Tech for the pipe hunter. We entertained, we got a bid submission from BatCon. And then the one that I liked, my recommendation, is for the City of Perry to move, purchase the Vector from Jack Levine Company located in Northville, Michigan. The cost that they submitted was $350,854.22. They're a company that we've worked with with our current unit for years. They've got good customer service, and we have a good working relationship with their company. The units we're looking at are the smallest, most cost-effective units that we can buy, short of getting trailer units, which aren't feasible for the job that we have to do at a moment's notice. Do any of you have any questions at all, what I presented to you? I do have some literature from the companies that were with various trucks. They kind of show what they look like and highlight their features and stuff like that. If anyone's interested in seeing those.
Kevin, I'm looking at the weight on this one. Do our staff all have CDLs?
It's below CDL.
All of these trucks are below CDL. But yes, we are all qualified and drive. The truck that we have now requires a CDL and a tanker endorsement.
Most likely tank is on there. I can't find it. I didn't see before.
Typically, these small trucks have 500 gallons of water capacity, and they're three-yard debris tanks.
Debris.
The industry standard is a one-year warranty for the back and jetter and three years on the chassis is what, if you're interested in what they offer for warranty.
What engine is in that Freightliner manufacturer?
It is the...
The M2106. I just don't know what that one is.
It's the same one that's in our plow truck right now. So, it would be essentially the same chassis that we already have in the fleet. So, it would make maintenance and supplying products and stuff streamlined, as opposed to having a different brand of chassis.
Now, Chad, that was supposed to be the, who, what the manufacturer of the engine? Because you can get different engines, and I was just curious what it is, because some have issues more than others.
I think that that's a Freightliner engine, but I could be wrong on that.
Yeah, let's just tell them. I, yeah, I'm not familiar with Freightliner engines. So, that's all. Diesel, Detroit, cab. Does it say in Detroit? Did you see it? No, yeah, I did see that quickly.
I know it's a lot of information to take in, and if you're not prepared to make a decision tonight, I can do some fact-finding or anything else you may need. We may have to have some bids resubmitted if we go again, but...
What's the plan with the old one?
So, we're gonna keep it on for a while and use it and abuse it a little bit, and then it'll probably go up to auction. There is some trade-in options, but it seems to me that they really lowball you on the trade-in, and I think we could do better in an open auction.
An auction.
So, we'd wait for a municipal auction. The build time on the Vector is, they're saying 365 days for delivery. So, once you sign the documentation stating that you have the intent to purchase, then they procure the chassis and start ordering parts for the bill, which kind of helps our situation, because we need to get those deposits into the motor pool account. So, we have, what we're looking at doing is using funds that fell there first half of it. Megan and I are looking at financing options for the second half of it, and so we're gonna finance 50% of it. She's looking at some in-house financing options, like loaning from a different fund to pay for paying ourselves back interest. We've also talked to some lending establishments that are willing to lend with us. We're looking to do a three-year loan on the second half of the truck. That would put us in line to also get the plow truck... That would put us in line to also get the, the plow truck, no, the, the eighty, I'm sorry, the ninety, I think it's ninety-two, plow truck replaced in a timely fashion as well. The, the vehicle emission standards are changing and we're trying to get all the purchases for the chassis done by twenty twenty-five because the chassis prices are going to go up considerably beyond that. So this plan works to get both of those units replaced within the next five years. And we also need a leaf loader back and various other equipment that's aging out pretty quickly.
If, if this gets approved from the council, how long will it take to get the new truck? Did they say?
It was three hundred sixty-five days on for delivery. Sorry, I didn't know if you. I, I mentioned that. I'm sorry, you were probably reading there. Other, other manufacturers are saying that they have a quicker lead time, but I don't know that we would be ready to take possession of one, you know, quicker. Like this demo unit, which is a very similar price, it's from an out of state company, M-Tech. They're located in Ohio, I believe. They, their, their twenty twenty-three demo unit is ready to go tomorrow, but calling, they're dropping it off.
Megan, do you have anything to add to what Kevin talked about from a finance perspective at this point?
Um, I would just remind you that when we approved the budget, the plan was that we would pay fifty percent of the purchase price. That's coming from motor pool, quarterly transfers from all the other funds within the budget. So we budgeted about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars of revenue being moved to motor pool this year to fund that fifty percent that the city would cover out of pocket. I looked at financing options. The lowest interest rate I could find was for three years, five point two percent. Also over three years, that would cost almost twenty thousand dollars for the, for financing the other hundred and seventy thousand purchase. So I'm exploring options to self-fund the purchase, even if it is from a different designated fund. And even if we pay ourselves back interest, maybe closer to what rates on the announced CDs right now. That way, whatever fund puts the bill, most likely the general fund, they would still be gaining the same interest they would if that money was sitting in a higher yield CD.
What do we have to put down or pay to order it?
I think letter of intent.
Just a letter of intent. We don't have to send them.
I can work up the details. I didn't get that far with them, just getting the, the bid submissions and getting it approved. It was, was where I was at so far. I guess I probably should have brought that information to you as well. I could probably step out and call the sales rep and see what he says, what it takes to get the truck coming, if you'd like to know.
Just as long as it gets, just so what, what, what do we need to approve to get it in order? Because I know it's at least a year old. Three hundred sixty-five is probably optimistic.
It's, from, from what I've gathered from dealing with these companies is, is they're, they're pretty equipped to, you know, they deal with municipal pretty much exclusively municipal accounts. So getting the truck ordered and getting it coming is, is pretty easy.
Easy, okay.
So I don't think it would take a whole lot down to secure it or, it was my understanding to get the process started was a letter of intent.
If there are any funds required, it's my understanding from the conversation I had with Kevin and Megan earlier today that we have funding in the motor pool in this budget year that would cover, they needed ten or twenty percent down or something to.
Well, we have it in our budget. That's, I guess that's.
Well, there's, there's three hundred fifty thousand in the budget because it was assuming that we would go out and finance the other half. So regardless, we have it in this year's budget to purchase up to three hundred fifty thousand.
I don't think we have to pay for it for them to build it, but we're going to have to give them something probably.
Perhaps.
Any other comments, questions?
What I researched, just confirm that it's a Cummins engine. I'm going to need a minute to, to let me know. I'm sure it is. That's what the research I just did found, but. I don't ask because we got a headache and we have a headache in a vehicle, a big truck like that, so.
I can give it to you tomorrow.
Are we willing to entertain a motion this evening or do we need to table this until our next meeting?
I move that we authorize the purchase of the Vector combination truck by Vector not to exceed three hundred fifty thousand, eight hundred fifty-four dollars and twenty-two cents and authorize the mayor and/or superintendent DPW to sign any and all documents necessary to complete the purchase agreement subject to city attorney approval. The treasurer is exploring options to self-finance the purchase.
Second. A motion by Bob, seconded by Steve. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, motion passes.
Thank you, thanks Kevin.
Thanks.
Thanks Kevin. And Megan. Next item on the agenda is discussion around the city clerk position. And it's my understanding with some, some notes from Sue and discussion that I had earlier with Megan and Shirley today, and Mindy, hopefully can verify this, that, that there's information that's going to be reviewed by the personnel committee this next week with job description, wage structure and office position activity with the personnel committee bringing a recommendation forward, probably toward next council meeting. Is that your assessment?
Yes.
Anything to add to that? It's.
We're not going to put it out to public review? I mean, surely it might be the best qualified candidate we have, but I think that we should at least present it out there to the public.
Well, on the other side, things that we will be discussing.
Okay.
Personal meaning.
I just, there is any need to bring a recommendation. That's all I just.
The recommendation made, you know.
Well, it'd be that. That's all I have.
Yeah, and my, the recommendation would be, do we need to go out and host it? You know, do we, so all those options I think are still on the table for the personnel committee to discuss and bring forward to us at, at the next meeting. Any other comments or questions around that for any of us or for Mindy to carry into the personnel committee meeting? If not, we'll move on to the next topic and that deals with the potential to set a public hearing for the new ambulance special assessment activity. And I think where we're at with that is there's a, a need to stay in step with the rest of the organization that's involved with SESA and potentially moving to a hundred and ten dollars per, per year, Bob?
Hundred and ten dollars per unit, per year. And this is, we're way under budget or, they're not funding enough right now, so we do need to increase it. And we have heard that the local private company, can't remember the name, and I probably shouldn't say it anyways, is increasing their rate to mimic ours, mirrors what, what SESA's been asking all the, and from what I understand, all the reports back, all the municipalities that are in the organization are on board with doing one ten.
Okay, that was one of the open questions, I think, that we had. So whatever we, whatever we decide to do, you know, should anything go awry, it's my understanding that we're not absolutely committing, we're committing to going up to one ten if we get to that point. But it doesn't say that if something goes awry, that we're going to necessarily put that on a tax bill automatically. But there is a process that we need to go through, which involves a couple of public hearings. So tonight, we're not approving anything. We're approving, if I understand it correctly, if I'm wrong, we're approving, holding a public hearing for the next step in the special assessment process.
Correct. We, the city of Perry will not be the only one paying a hundred and ten dollars per household or for a unit, I can say per household. I know the Perry township already has a scheduled public hearing and I believe it's in October. It's either September or October, but I think it's October. So that's as much as I know.
Okay, we're looking at right now, trying to set ours for August seventeenth because there's some other things that we want to try to look at potentially doing if we are able to move forward. We already made an adjustment in the summer taxes and would like to be able to say, are we going to make, try to do anything to, to get hold in the winter tax timeframe? Or are we going to wait and see how it plays out? So we're really looking right now is to set the public hearing, as I indicated. And one of the things that I don't believe we have in this motion, but I think it's paramount that we do, is that we have SESA representation at that public hearing to do a, a high level review that we saw when Tim Delu came in here, probably a couple of months ago now, when shared with us the whys behind that proposed increase.
Yes, we can make sure we have the presentation, documentation that backs up the, the need.
Any other comments, questions, discussion around that this evening? If not, looking for a potential motion to move forward with setting up the public hearing.
I move that we accept and adopt the following resolution. Whereas the Perry, Perry city council has determined that a special assessment is necessary and proper to defray the cost of the city of providing ambulance service to the parcels of property within the city benefited by ambulance service. Therefore, the city of Perry does hereby propose to create a special assessment district of the property benefited by said ambulance service, consisting of all improved parcels of property within the city of Perry limit, Perry city limits, excuse me. The city of Perry does hereby determine to hold a hearing on the estimate of the cost of ambulance service and on the question of creating a special assessment district on the property to be especially benefited. Said hearing shall be held on the seventeenth of August, twenty twenty-three at seven fifteen Y M. The city assessor is directed to complete plans and estimates for services to be funded by special assessment. The city clerk is directed to mail notice of said hearing by first class mail to each owner or party in interest in the property located within the proposed special assessment district whose name appears on the last local tax assessment records of the city at least ten days before the date of said hearing. The city clerk is further directed to publish in a newspaper of general circulation in the city a notice of said hearing. Said publication shall be published not less than five days before the hearing.
Second. We have a motion from Mindy, seconded by Bob. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Well, that will be the next step as we move forward in that process. Okay, next on the agenda, we have a possible first reading of zoning ordinance three eighty-three, section three point three zero, animals in residential and agricultural districts. And this is basically a follow-up to a couple of ordinance, things that will be talking about later on the agenda that we had a first reading at our last meeting with some clarification and definition of camel and definition of pets. This is the other part of that activity. Any, I will point out before we actually start going through the motion that some of the high points of what is in here versus what we have in our current zoning ordinance right now is in part clarification. Basically, we've walked through and said that define the stipulations by which the zoning administrator can alter temporarily the number of pets that we have allowed within any single residence within the city by request of a temporary permit. We also did add a section that will allow for a fostering of cats that is not currently in our current ordinance and it's in the proposal here that we'll be reading through. We then basically just cleaned up some specific verbiage along the way. And we did add a small section dealing with the Perry chapter of the FFA because of the buildings that they have over on the school property. Just pointed out a few recommended things to have in our ordinance that they need to follow. And since the properties kind of split, that part of their buildings are in the city and part of them are in the township, you'll see that the ordinance largely relies on what the county ordinances require in that vein rather than overspecify, if you will, from a city perspective. That's kind of a high level of what's changing or proposed changing in the document we're going to go through. Comments, questions, discussion? I will take it tacky going through a part of this since I chair the ordinance committee and put on a separate hat here right now for a minute and then ask for someone maybe to pitch in and, and help. I move that ordinance number three eighty-two, section three point three zero, which reaches follows be placed on the next agenda for possible adoption. The city of Perry ordains Perry city code section three point three zero, animals in residential and agricultural districts is amended as follows. Section three point three zero, animals in residential and agricultural districts. B, pets in residential and agricultural districts. Point seven, in the R one A, R one B, residents within mixed use and A one districts, up to four pets shall be permitted. In the R T and R M districts, up to two pets shall be permitted. Point nine, breeding shall not be permitted. However, in the instance that a pet has offspring, the litter shall be permitted to remain on the premises for up to two months to allow for adoption. Point ten, any additional pets greater than the amount specified in subsections one and two may only be granted on a temporary basis, ninety days maximum, once per twelve month period, after an annual permit is issued by the zoning administrator. Request for a temporary permit is made by using the animal permit application form available on the city of Perry website. Point eleven, prior to the issuance of any permit, the zoning administrator shall require the applicant to provide proof of the requirements set out in table three point three zero A below. And got birds, indoor bird cage with a minimum size of three times that of the animal. Cats, minimum indoor shelter of nine square feet. Dogs, minimum fixed fence, yard space and indoor shelter of twenty square feet. Reptiles, indoor terrarium with a minimum size of three times that of the animal. Rodents, indoor cage with a minimum size of three times that of the animal. Editorial comment, those are the same as what is in the current ordinance. Point twelve, in addition to the amount specified in subsection one, up to two foster cats will be allowed in R one A, R one B, single family residents within mixed use and A one districts. Request for a foster cat home permit is made by using the animal permit application form available on the city of Perry website. One of the key requirements that must be met before foster cat home permit approval is a documented foster program affiliation and approval from a recognized cat rescue organization. Foster cat homes are not permitted in R T and R M districts. Breeding shall not be permitted, however, in the instance that a cat has offspring, the litter shall be permitted to remain on the premises for up to two months to allow for adoption. Anybody want to step in?
B, livestock in residential districts. Two, no livestock shall be permitted in the R one A, R one B, R T, R M or residences with, within mixed districts. C, livestock in agricultural district. One, domestic farm animals and livestock, including horses, cows, sheep, swine and other animals as determined by the zoning administrator, solely for the personal, non-commercial use of the occupants of the premises shall be permitted in the A one district, subject to the following subsections of this section. Two, the portion of the property proposed as open space for livestock shall be entirely enclosed with suitable fence or wall, subject to section three point one three to prevent escape of the animals. animals. A, the zoning administrator may approve fences up to eight feet in height, provided the fence is properly set back from all adjacent properties and the entire length of the fence is screened with evergreen trees. B, livestock enclosures shall be located in the side or rear yards, and shall not be permitted in the front yard of any property. C, livestock enclosures shall be set back at least 15 feet from the adjacent residential properties. Three, animal waste shall be managed to prevent odors and other nuisances. Four, housing facilities for animals shall be structurally sound, and shall be maintained and repaired to protect animals from injury. Five, all animal buildings, cages, and runs shall be of sufficient size to provide adequate and proper housing for those animals kept therein. Animal living space shall be, in addition to the open space requirements set out in table 3.30b below. Six, the zoning administrator may require additional measures for livestock management, which may include, but are not limited to, screening or buffering of livestock enclosures, active noise management, and additional facilities for animal housing. Seven, issuance of a permit shall only be granted upon completion and/or acquisition of the following documentation. A, application and fee. B, inspection of premises for proof of adequate open space, fencing, screening, and/or shelter for requested animals. C, authorization, signature of the zoning administrator. Table 3.30b, open space requirements for livestock. Cattle, first animal is two acres, each additional animal is one acre. Goats, first animal is one acre, each additional animal, one acre. Horses and ponies, first animal is two acres, each additional animal, one acre. Poultry, 16 square feet, each additional, I'm sorry, that was first animal, 16 square feet. Each additional animal, 10 square feet. Rabbits, first animal, 12 square feet, each additional animal, eight square feet. Sheep, first animal, one acre, each additional animal, one acre. Swine, first animal, one acre, each additional animal, one acre. D, wild and vicious animals in the City of Perry. One, no wild animal or vicious animal shall be kept permanently or temporarily in any district except in a facility credited by the American Association of Zoological Parks and Aquariums, or in a licensed veterinary care facility. E, animal facilities on Perry Public School property managed by Perry Chapter of FFA, Future Partners of America. One, animal waste shall be managed to prevent odors and other nuisances. Two, housing facilities for animals shall be structurally sound, and shall be maintained and good repaired to protect animals from injury. Three, all animal buildings, cages, and runs shall be of sufficient size to provide adequate and proper housing for those animals kept therein. Four, all facilities must comply with all Chaiwasi County ordinance's requirements. This ordinance shall take effect 30 days from the date of publication.
Seconded.
Can I give a quick suggestion? Somewhere around the beginning of her reading, she said cow, mentioned cattle. Cow is very specific.
Okay.
Was it in the table?
I don't know, it was just wherever you took over, I don't know if it was the table or not.
Oh, cows, it's in, it's in, it's in C where it says livestock and agricultural district. It's in line one. It says domestic farm animals and livestock, including horse, including horses, and then it says cows.
Okay, we'll change that to, good catch. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a motion by Larry and Mindy, seconded by Steve, I believe. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition?
Yes. I oppose.
Pardon?
I oppose.
You oppose? Okay, we need to do a roll call.
Yep.
Please, Shirley?
Yes.
Mike Connel?
Yes.
Bob Corrier?
No.
Steve Wallace?
Yes.
Chad Haller?
Yes.
Motion passes with one opposing vote. So, we'll be moving forward and placing that on our next agenda for review. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, possible adoption of zoning amendment 381, section 2.12, concerning kennels. And this is one that we read at the last committee meeting, or excuse me, council meeting, and this would be actually to approve that reading. Basically clarifies the language a little bit around kennel definition. Comments, questions?
I move that zoning ordinance amendment 381, section 2.12, regarding kennels, which reads as follows to be adopted. The City of Perry ordains, Perry City Code, section 2.12, kennel is amended as follows. Section 2.12 kennel, any lot or premises on which more than four dogs six months of age or older are kept temporarily or permanently for the purpose of breeding, boarding, being pets, or for sale.
Motion by Chad, seconded by Larry. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Now, we have a very similar one concerning our definition of pets. And there again, this is a matter of clarifying the language that we currently have on the zoning ordinance, regarding your definition of pets. Comments, questions, before we move forward? I move the zoning ordinance amendment 382, section 2.17, regarding pets, which reads as follows be adopted. The City of Perry ordains, Perry City Code, section 2.17p for pets is amended as follows. Section 2.17p, pets, domesticated animals kept for pleasure and not for utility. A list of pets include the following: dogs, cats, hot-bellied pigs, and rabbits. Pets do not include standard chickens of any kind or breed, poultry, goats, horses, miniature horses, or other animals commonly raised in animal husbandry.
Seconded.
And a motion by Larry, seconded by Steve. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Hearing none, motion passes. Next item we have on the agenda is our continuing discussion around building the general fund. We had this on the agenda for the last couple of meetings, with a lot of good discussion. I think right now, the general sentiment might be, and some notes from Sue, as well as some discussion that Shirley and Megan and I had up for discussion, would be that we continue to keep this in mind and keep discussion going when we have Sue back and the rest of, Mike can join us. But right now, that we put our, at least immediate focus on the special ambulance assessment activity, and make sure that we walk through that public hearing process and that overall, hopefully ultimately approval, and pick up, in earnest, the work around building the general fund, maybe the end of this calendar year. But in the meantime, I'd say continue to have some discussion about it, and ideas about how we can address our continued struggle to reach a balanced budget. Comments, questions? Everybody's okay with that? I just think let's keep it on the agenda for next time, Shirley, and we'll, as a discussion item going forward. Any other business that needs to come before council this evening? Hearing none, any additional public comments this evening? Council discussions and observations? I think everything's going well, and appreciate all the help from everybody to get me through tonight. Items for the next agenda? We've got the possible approval of the pet ordinance, and we've got a couple other things I know that you've got down. Shirley, do we have anything else that we should have on the agenda for next time? Hearing none. It is now 8 o'clock, meeting adjourned.